Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Welcome to the May 20th, 2020, Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. As a preliminary matter, this is Joel Margolis, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Before beginning the meeting, I would like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I am confirming that all members in person who were anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Victoria Caldwell.
Here.
Pam Gugian.
Here.
David Battistelli. Jim Lavasur. Jim Lavasur. I see him, but I want to hear him.
Here.
Thank you. Stefano Vasto.
Present.
And Peggy O'Brien.
Here.
Okay, and I am here as well.
Kevin.
Kevin. Yes, Kevin, I'm sorry, I missed you, Kevin.
Sorry.
This was right in front of me. Okay, staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Stephen, Steve Frederickson.
Yeah.
And Leanna Harris. Leanna Harris.
Yeah, David Battistelli just joined.
I'm sorry, say that again?
David Battistelli just joined.
Okay, David is here.
Sorry about that.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Rachel Tesler for 70 Livingston Avenue.
This is Dan Tesler on the line for her.
Daniel Goodwin for 10 Miller Road. Attorney Alexander and Jan Houston Smith for Conan Street.
Yeah, I'm on. I don't know if Jan is.
Okay. John Mancini for 16 Harrison Avenue. Attorney Alexander and Christine Silva again for 90 Bridge Street.
Yes, I'm on.
Okay.
I'm also here.
I'm sorry, who is that?
This is Christine.
Okay, thank you. Christine, is Severio going to be on with you as well?
Severio is on.
Okay, separately?
Separately, yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. This open meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspended the requirement of open meeting laws at all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so as long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public will follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting may be for public comment. Can I ask everybody to mute their so that we don't have some background noise? Thank you. For this meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals is convening by telephone and video conference via Google Hangout located on the city's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised by all attendees and participants via video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you are participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by the Chair to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking has finished before speaking so that we can clearly hear all participants. Supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available from the Building Department. Please contact Building Inspector Steve Frederickson to request supporting materials. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless Chair notes otherwise. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, I will cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The Chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will invite board members to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. You may mute yourself to be or be you may mute yourself or be muted by the meeting host by clicking the microphone unmute icon, pressing the mute button on your phone, or by pressing star six on the telephone keypad. Please reserve the chat function for technical difficulties and not for public comments. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please state your name and affiliation before speaking regarding public comment. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comments as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. For those individuals present in person, please take care to speak loudly and clearly so the microphone associated with the webcam or telephone can effectively broadcast your comments to those participating remotely. Finally, each vote taken in the meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. We ready to begin?
Joel. Joel.
Yes.
It's Leanna. Carrie Goodwin just emailed me. She said that they were in on the meeting, but nobody could hear them. They're for 10 Miller Road, so they're going to call back in or try and get back in.
Okay, well, first on the agenda is 70 Livingston Avenue. What I intend to do is I'm going to try to run this the same way we run it when we're at City Hall. Is we're going to hear from the applicant and their representative. We will then ask the public if they have any comments pro or con, for or against, and then we'll go back to the board for comments, questions, and discussion. First on the agenda is Rachel Tesler. This is in a petition for a request for a special permit to rebuild a non-conforming detached garage that was destroyed by a windstorm in October 2019. New garage to be the same size and location. Property is located at 70 Livingston Avenue in our 10 zoning district. We hear from Rachel. Is Rachel present? I'll give her a minute.
Joel, she may have been, she may have that wrong link. You know, from speaking with her a couple months ago about this, I don't think she would have missed this meeting at all. So.
Well, let's put it on hold, put her on hold, and we'll come back to her. That's all we can do. I don't have access to her, any phone numbers unless somebody else does.
Dan Tesler said that he was here a few minutes ago for her.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Maybe he needs to unmute himself.
Okay, can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yeah.
I must have muted myself. I'm sorry.
Is that Dan Tesler?
This is, yeah.
Okay, Dan, would you like to make your presentation to us?
Sure, it's I guess I think originally our contractor, Zachary Fellows, was going to be making this, but I think he's still having trouble getting into this meeting, but I'd be glad to make the presentation. Basically, the structure we're looking to rebuild is a detached garage that's about 16 by 20 feet wide. And it was taken, it was destroyed by a tree that came down in a windstorm in October. And basically what we're looking to do is rebuild it in the in the same size and location as it originally was. We also sent a copy of the plans out to our neighbors for them ahead of this meeting for any input that they may have. And all of our budding neighbors to the garage sent us an email with approval that they have no problem with the with rebuilding it as we presented.
Dan, do you have any copies of those emails, or if you have any, an email you can read to us with whose names are on it?
I can, it should just be I have to boot up my other computer. Is there an email address I could forward it to right now? If that would be helpful.
Leanna, if he forwards it to you, can you display it to us?
I don't know how to do that, but does Pam know how to do that?
Do what?
Share. Yeah.
If he sends you an email, if he sends you an email with the names of the people who have forked in favor, can you display it to us?
Pam? I can.
Yeah, or Jim, or I don't know if I can share the screen or not. I mean, at least, do I have that ability? I don't know if I can because yeah, I think I can. So, yes, they send me the email.
Pam, you want to give this, Joel, your email address?
Where should I send the email to?
You can send it to, actually, I don't know, I really want to like announce my email address.
Wait a minute, hold on, can we get it to, can we get it to Leanna, or is it Steve, and then forward it?
Yeah, I can do that. You can send it to me. You can send it to lharis@beverlyma.gov.
Did you get that?
I did.
Okay, if you could forward that to her, and she will forward it to Pam.
Right, or Leanna can do it. She just goes to present now down at the corner, down at the bottom corner, like the same toolbar that Kevin was talking about, and it will present your screen.
I have you up on my phone because I'm using my laptop to type, so.
Okay.
I can't really do much with the comments.
All right.
While we're waiting to do that, everybody, voting on this will be myself, Victoria, David, Jim, and Kevin. While we're doing that, is there anything further you want to present to us, please?
There is, no, I think that the bulk of, really the bulk of what we're want to present, and I just sent the email out.
I just forwarded it to Pam.
We all, does everybody have the plans in front of them? A package?
I do.
Okay. Jim, have you got it?
Steven hasn't.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in favor or against the petition? Okay, hearing none. While we're waiting for that email to get passed through, does any member of the board have any questions?
Are there any differences between the current garage and the new garage?
I don't, I don't believe so. They have the the same number of, same number of windows indoors, and then the single garage door on the front again.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and then the goal is to make it pretty much exactly the same.
Dan, can you speak up for us, please?
I'm not aware of any differences. The goal is to make it exactly the same.
Is it on, this is Joel Margolis, is it on, is it on the exact same footprint of the old garage?
Yeah, that's what, that's exactly what we want to do, is have it on the same footprint.
All right, so that clarifies the size much.
I don't have any confirmed questions. It looks like a good design, looks like it'll fit in with what's in the neighborhood currently.
Any other comments or questions from anyone?
This is David.
David, go ahead.
To the applicants, while we're waiting for Leanna, could you confirm to me that 12 Harris is one of the people that have signed in favor?
That's correct, 12 Harris did send an email supporting it.
Okay. I just want to hear in your own words why you couldn't move it a couple feet to the right.
Well, we have a pretty small yard to begin with. It's really the reason, and it's been there so long.
Is the tree that it butts against on your property or your neighbors?
Are you looking at you're probably looking at the pictures.
No, I just, I went by it today. I just, the tree that's, the left side of it smack up against, is that on your property or your neighbors?
It's actually on both of our properties. Yeah.
All right, that's all, that's all I have.
Okay.
Did anybody else get pictures of this in the packet?
Yep.
No.
Joel?
Yes.
I don't know if there's a way for, I was just trying to do it myself, but we should be able to share a screen with an image of the plan, which would be, I think, helpful to the people who are listening in or watching. I was trying to do that, but I, because we could, I think it'd be better if we talk about these if we actually have the plan, because it was emailed to us.
I totally agree. But unless those plans were copied and put on a, you know.
They're on a PDF, we got them in a PDF, that's what I just, I was a little nervous about trying to present it because I had it in my email as an attachment.
Pam, do you have the ability to do that? You muted Pam. Pam, unmute yourself. Pam?
Yes, I am, I just had to set up my account here because, am I sharing my screen now?
We're trying to get you to show us the plans on your, on the screen.
Are you seeing my screen?
No.
Okay, it's.
There we go.
That's me doing it.
Oh, that's you, Kevin, okay.
Yeah.
Good.
So, I'm not sure, you know, each one, we have a couple pages here.
So it says 2.3 feet. 5.4 feet, rear property line.
Joel?
Yes, I'm here.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to say that because he's rebuilding it on the same exact footprint, I don't have a problem, you know, I think this is perfectly fine whether we get the neighbors' emails or not.
Okay, I agree.
I agree.
Did you get that email?
Yeah, I did. I'm just trying to see if I can present it. It's, unfortunately, it's, I don't think it's going to let me present this without getting the emails.
All right, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, he would have to, it's a different, I have to send it to a different email account because I'm on a different email account for this meeting.
Pam, can you read into the record just the names of the people or the addresses?
Oh, yeah, I can do that.
Somebody's got a lot of feedback, and everybody muted something, I'm not speaking.
I'm going to go ahead and read the names now. It's Brent Dobbins at 17 Kernwood Avenue. James and Ann Riley at 72 Livingston Avenue. Carrie Clarissa, 12 Harris Street. Deborah Sommer, 64 Livingston Avenue. Dan Atkinson, 21 Kernwood Avenue. And that's the, and they were each individual emails.
Okay, thank you very much, Pam. Any other comments or questions from the board members? Kevin, you can take, Kevin, you can take that plan down. Great, thank you.
I disagree with, I agree with Victoria, but I do feel the combination of the 12 hours being in favor of it and the fact that the garage has been there for probably dozens of years. I have no problem with it.
All right. Anybody else? We ready to close the public hearing? I have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Give a second.
Second.
All right, motion was made to close the public hearing by Kevin, the seconded by David Battistelli. We have a motion to approve.
Oh, I thought we all had to vote on that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the demolition of the garage at 17 Livingston Avenue with the replacement of an identical structure on the identical footprint as per the plan submitted. I want to remark that this is not going to be more detrimental to the neighborhood or adversely affect the values of the housing there.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second, David.
David? Let's have a roll call vote. Victoria?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I'm voting yes as well. Motion carries five zero. Very good, thank you. We'll move on to the next one. This is for Daniel Goodwin. Is Daniel Goodwin here?
Hi, we are here. Can you hear us?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, and thank you.
Right.
All right, this is a petition for a special permit to demolish an existing non-conforming single car garage with a side yard setback of 11 feet, seven inches, and replace it with a new single car garage with a side yard setback of eight feet, nine, eight feet, nine inches, where 15 feet is required. Property is located at 10 Miller Road in our 15 zoning district. Would either of the Goodwins like to make a presentation of this?
I'm here, I don't know if you guys can hear me, Bill Nolan, from Savoy Nolan Architects, representing the Goodwins.
Okay.
Everybody hear me?
Yes.
So, do you like me to start?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. So, thank you guys for doing this. I know it's, I know everybody's kind of struggling to get through this. I'm sorry, I appreciate the fact that you guys are doing this. My name is Bill Nolan from Savoy Nolan Architects. I'm here representing Dan and Kyrie Goodwin. I'll try to keep this brief. We did, when Dan and Kyrie reached out to their neighbors and showed them the plans that we've had. However, due to the pandemic, we didn't get letters of support, just didn't want to risk the health. So, we did, they did reach out specifically to Tyberg's at 8 Miller Road, which is, if you're looking at their house from the, on the left. 9 Miller Road, their house directly, sorry, 8 and 9 are, 8 is to the left, 9 is across the street. That's Mr. Malone. Number 11, Mr. Mott is also across the street. And number 12, which is directly to the right, is Mr. Hill. They did meet with them prior to the pandemic, showed them the showed them the drawings and plans. And for all accounts, no one seemed to have an issue with it. Do not have letters, handwritten letters, though, of support. For the record. The existing house is a single-family, one and a half story Cape, the 1949, with the attached single car garage. The Goodwins hired us to look at taking their existing sun porch. This currently situated between the existing main house and this single car garage. And turn it into living space, which we could do by right. However, the existing garage, which is directly adjacent to it, is in a state of disrepair. So neither I or the builder felt comfortable attaching a new structure to it. And in an instance, we had to overlap the roof a little bit. So we just weren't comfortable, and I couldn't advise that they do that. So we looked at taking the garage down, repairing it. And unfortunately, it's within the setback, so it's an existing non-conforming. What we're looking to do is create the additional living space, enclose the sun porch, and create a family room and a mudroom for the existing house, which again can be done by right. And tear it down and replace the existing single car garage with the new single car garage that's slightly larger. The current garage, and I think most people are in this case on the street, is not really suitable for to house a car. It's very tight. The existing slab is bunk, and existing foundation, we're skeptical there is even footings underneath it. So it really does need to come down and be replaced. And the difference between a, you know, a functional garage and simply replacing what's there, in terms of a cost scenario, is not significant. So on our recommendation, myself and the builder, the Goodwins are looking to, you know, replace the garage with a functional garage. So while we're here, we're looking to relief, to allow for a construction of a new single-car garage that will reduce the setbacks to 8 foot 9, and we're using, all right? We're using section 300-8, non-conforming dwellings, paragraph A, 1 and 2 family dwellings, sub-paragraph 2, that hence you get the right to issue a special permit to enlarge existing setback, as long as it's no greater than 50% of the required minimum setback. There is also a 300-11 in the Beverly zoning ordinance, undersized lots of record that would allow us to go up to 8 feet. We took the most conservative, and we're actually under even the 8-foot setback. So I think that is the extent of my presentation. I do have the drawings pulled up on my screen if you would like me to share anything.
If you're comfortable sharing, we'd be happy to have it. We have one drawing up that Kevin has put up.
Sure. Okay, so do I need permission, or do I just? How do you share a screen more details?
Kevin, are you able to show the rest of those pages?
I think if Kevin stops presenting, he can present if he pulls down the drop-down menu on the bottom, right?
Oh, I see. You're right.
Make yours down, Kevin. Thank you.
Okay.
We don't see anything yet.
So you see where it says present now on the right there?
Hit it. All right, so try that. Present now?
And you just your screen.
Window or my entire screen?
If you see the window you want, just do that.
Window, yeah, window.
Okay, yeah, entire screen's not working, but, window. You guys seeing it?
No, not yet.
It has to be open in the same Chrome tab, and that was the problem I had. I couldn't, I'm not using my computer, so.
Mr. Nolan, would you like me to show something?
Well, it was more for your benefit or for anybody viewing this at home. Really, the, we're keeping the existing sunroom pretty much the same dimension. We are going towards the back a little bit. The garage is, we're trying to build it on as close to the same footprint as possible while still making it a functional, you know, single-car garage, and we can't, we couldn't pull it any closer to the house because it's really, you know, inching, that's their main door. So if you look at the proposed plans, we're creating a mudroom at the front, the living space in the back with the connection to the garage. So we really didn't have the space to pull the garage any closer to the house without really, really pinching that. So discussed it, we, this was one of our best shot at it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask the general public, is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor or against this petition? Anybody? Members of the board, comments or questions?
So you might want to remind people to unmute themselves if they do want to speak.
Right.
Anyone who's muted.
Anybody wish to make comment? David?
I think the drawings indicate this is going to be a gorgeous-looking house when it's done. It's going to add value to certainly their property by quite a bit, and it should help other neighbors' properties. I do see a small shed on the property line of the neighbor. Would that still be there?
I know, great. Thank you for pointing that out. I had it in my notes and I skipped over it. No, that is, that is to be removed, and a great, great point. It's currently right now, I think, border, on the borderline, if not a little bit over. Yeah, the plan is to remove, remove that. We possibly will relocate it. If we do, it'll be, you know, right.
Yeah, if you're relocating, it would have to be subject to whatever zone, zoning requirements.
Yes, and we may not even, we may not even put it down.
Vicky, did you have a question?
I just had a comment. I just wanted to say that I agree with David, and I think that this is a very tasteful plan and project, and I think it'll be added a lot to their family's home and to the neighborhood. And I have one of those tiny garages too, and looks good to me. I would enjoy this. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Joel, I just want to say I think it's a very reasonable addition for the size of the lot, given that they don't have a ton of frontage here. There's not a lot of options in terms of upgrading the garage to meet current standards. I think it's a good solution, and the, yeah, the house looks great.
Okay, thank you. All right, just for the record, voting on this is, will be Victoria, Pam, David, Jim, and myself. Any other further comments? We have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is that Victoria?
Yeah.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
That was David.
Jim.
Roll call vote on that is Victoria, yes. Victoria?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And for myself, yes. Any final questions before you, somebody makes a motion? Okay, can we have a motion for this petition, please?
I'll make a motion to grant the special permit for 10 Miller Road to demolish the existing non-conforming single-car garage with a side yard setback of 11 feet, 7 inches, and replace it with a new single-car garage with a side yard setback of 8 feet, 9 inches, where 15 feet is required, with the finding that the proposed addition and replacement garage is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, subject to the plans submitted.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
I'll take David. Okay, roll call. Victoria? Those in favor, Victoria? Pam?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And yes for myself. That's, motion carries five to zero. You're all set.
You very much.
Thank you all.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is in a petition for modification of a special permit for an in-law apartment issued by the only Board of Appeals, September 25. And Jan Houston's the in-law apartment to be occupied by the nephew, wife, Derek and Emily Smith. The property is located at 90 Conan Street in our 10 zoning district. Chairman Alexander?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom Alexander on behalf of Jan Houston-Smith and Darrell Houston-Smith. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so they have bought this property, which the board granted a special permit for an in-law apartment for the lower level, the basement basically, back in September of 19, excuse me, 2019, some eight months ago. They are seeking to do the same thing, not make any changes in the, that unit they would occupy as their principal residence, that the upper part of the house and the lower in-law apartment would be occupied by their nephew and his wife. I think it satisfies all the requirements of an in-law apartment, and has been recently reviewed by this board. There'll be absolutely no changes to the existing situation, and there are no exterior changes at all, none in the interior as well. So we're just swapping out one owner, occupant, husband and wife with relatives for another. So the, I believe that Jan Houston-Smith and Darrell Houston-Smith may have joined us. Maybe not. Leanna had sent them the link. But anyways, a pretty simple petition recently approved by this board.
Okay.
And I might add that this is working precisely, I think, as the ordinance was intended to, that when folks move out, that the board is put on notice, and new individuals are identified to take their place.
And Tom, to that, to that, to that point, just to make them aware that when they cease to use it as an in-law unit, that it reverts back to the main house?
Yes, we've reviewed that with them, and they're thoroughly aware of it.
Okay.
And that's why they know to go for this ZBA action.
Okay. It looks like they have joined us, but they're muted, so.
Oh, well, maybe they should unmute themselves at the bottom. Jan and Darrell?
Yes, hi.
There we go.
Tough.
Unmute thyself.
We're unmuted.
All right, for the record, on this, voting members will be Victoria, Pam, David, Jim, and myself. Any comments? Any members of the public who wish to speak in favor or against this petition? Members of the board, comments or questions? Pretty self-explanatory. David?
Well, this, I was wondering if the ordinance says anything in it about the relationship between the parties.
It just says, the language just says it has to be a relative. It does not define relative.
Yeah. Of course, this is the first, first one I've seen in six years on the board. It wasn't more of an immediate family situation.
Yeah, I think that nephew would, you know, come within the definition of relative. Any other comments, questions? Motion to close the public hearing. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Pam, okay. Roll call on that. Victoria?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
Jim?
Yes.
And for myself, yes. Motion carries five to zero. And any other final comments or questions before somebody makes a motion to approve or not approve? We have a motion, please. Anyone? David?
I'd like to make a motion for the applicant, 90 Conan Street, to have an in-law apartment. It's no judgment, I don't believe it's any judgment to the neighborhood. And is there plans? Yeah, subject to the plan.
Okay, do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Jim? Your roll call vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jim? And for myself, yes. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Appreciate your, your time and consideration. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the continued public hearing. This is for John Mancini, a petition for a request for a variance to build a two-star garage with a height of 20 feet and with a side setback of approximately 8.5 feet, where 15 feet is required, with a front setback of 17 feet, where 20 feet is required. The property is located at 16 Harrison Avenue in our 10 zoning district, and we're looking for a continuance. Any comments or questions from the public? Members of the public, which to speak in favor or against? Members of the board, comments or questions?
Is the applicant on?
Is Jim, is John Mancini on the, online with us? Apparently not.
I would just like to, I've seen the communication between Leanna and this applicant. I believe he is under the mistaken impression that all he needs is the neighbor's support of his previous plan, and he's off and running. And that was not the way it was left at the last hearing. The board, I thought, was very clear that we expected change in plans and a downsizing. But I don't know how to do that in a continuance. So what I would say is, we, this has been going on for quite some time, and I think that this applicant's gonna have to reapply and re-advertise.
Before you begin, Victoria, just for the record, I want to give the list of voting members. These are going to be the same voting members that voted on at the last time, the last continuance we had on this. It's Victoria, Pam, Jim, Kevin, and Stefano. Same voting members. Any other comments, Victoria?
I'm not keen on a continuance, but I, at the same time, I think we've given lengthy continuances to people who have been represented by council for other projects, and I feel like we should extend that same courtesy here. And we'll, if it comes forward again, we can deal with the substance of what David mentioned, and, you know, but I think as far as a continuance goes, I would be in favor of it.
Leanna, or to Eva Leanna, do we know, how many times has this become before us originally in our continuance? Leanna, or Steve or Leanna, do we know, how many times has this become before us originally in our continuance?
I think they first came to me in October of 2019, and then they continued, but there was no meeting in December. Then they continued in January to come back in the March meeting, but then there was no March meeting or April meeting. Now they're requesting another continuance.
Well, actually, I mean, we, we probably wouldn't have been able to hear, it would have been difficult if we wanted to avoid controversial applications remotely like this, to hear this particular case.
I would grant, be in favor of granting another continuance.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I do, I do want to say that again. I don't, I don't, we can, I don't necessarily think we can do here that. I would feel comfortable hearing this case remotely.
Say that again, David. You, you would not?
I don't, I don't know if I would feel comfortable continuing this case to our June meeting if it's still remote.
While I didn't vote on it, I, I know it was, it was, tended to be controversial, but I'm not voting on it, so.
I'm fine with a continuance.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Kevin, any? We have a roll call on the vote for that. Victoria?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Stefano?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion on the, to approve or not approve.
I'll make a motion to approve a continuance.
We have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Kevin? Again, roll call vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Stefano?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Motion to continue, it's granted.
Can I, can I just, I, I want to confirm that I wasn't a voting member on this case.
That's the report I got, from, I think, from Leanna. Leanna, can you confirm that?
That's what I, in the minutes, when I emailed it to you from, I think, October.
Yeah, okay.
Good.
Can we, Stephen, to you, can we specify that we want this heard, other than, other than remotely?
I just had to unmute myself. That's, Chairman, that's your call. According to city solicitor, you can determine
I can, right.
only hear remotely which ones we want.
Given the amount of activity we've heard from, from neighbors and from the, from the board members, I would like to, to require that this meeting be heard, other than remotely.
In general, it's my understanding that it's your call, doesn't even require a vote.
Okay, that's my, that's my recommend, that, that's what I'm saying. I want to have that. This should be heard at the City Hall Council Chambers. Victoria?
I just have one more suggestion, too. Given the length of time that's gone on here, is that maybe we should also re-notice the abutters.
I'd agree with that. And the, can a notice be sent from the city to the applicant? The next hearing that he's gonna have has to be with the, at City Hall, and a notice be sent to the abutters when that occurs.
Sure.
Okay. All right, moving on, finally. This is a, the last one is a petition for a request for a special permit to tear down a pre-existing non-conforming 22-foot by 26-foot garage and replace it with a smaller 22-by-26 garage. It's a 31.6% reduction in size. There's less non-conforming than the existing garage, a proposed garage being 21 feet from the rear lot line, where the existing garage is only 13, 3.6 feet, and 15 feet from the sideline, side lot line, where the existing garage is at 14.9 feet. Remove the, remove the existing front and rear dormers and replace them with a new front, new first, new second floor, sorry, new second floor above the existing first floor footprint of the dwelling. Property is located at 90 Bridge Street in our 10 zoning districts. Chairman Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Tom Alexander here for the applicant Christine Silva. I also have Christine is on board, as well as Severio Fulsanati, who is a designer and associated with Christine on this project. As, if you will recall, back in February, we got some feedback from the board that the, the design was not favorably looked upon, that we had, we had proposed, it was boxy, I think was the, the characterization of it. So we went back to the drawing board and redesigned it in a craftsman style to keep in, in keeping with the architectural, the, the style that it presently is. As a result, that we have been able to reduce the height from 35 feet in height down to 28 feet. And the, we've been able to articulate the front of the structure with more depth, as well as using a mix of cedar style siding and traditional horizontal siding. The roof lines have been changed to add two gable ends at the front of the structure, as well as one at the rear, so it looks more like the existing structure. The, the empty doors have been replaced, the garage doors, with craftsman-style doors. We've changed the railing and decking system over the garage throughout the home to a more traditional style. And windows at the front of the facade are framed in a traditional craftsman style, rather than using the 45-degree mitered edges. The, in addition, you, you might recall that Christine and Severio had had some difficulty in, in reaching some of the neighbors prior to the last public hearing that we had on this. They've been able to use the time since then to reach out and have contacted many of them. We provided you with letters and a petition in support. What I, I neglected to forward to you, but I'm gonna show to you. There were many, many letters and, and people in support. Not all of them were neighbors. You probably noticed that, but they are well-known and well-thought-of in the city. Christine is assistant soccer coach at Endicott College. But in any event, the, what I did is I did do a diagram here that just of the immediate neighborhood, and I'm gonna put it up, and I hope you can see it when I put it before you. In the, the blue hatched area, is, can you see this?
We see yellow area, yellow highlighted?
Yeah, do you see the, the hatched area?
No.
Right here that I'm pointing to with my finger? You can't see this?
No.
Oh, jeez.
Your finger's not in line with the camera.
Oh, okay, how's this?
There we go.
You see it now?
That's better, yes.
Move it to your left about two or three inches.
What's that?
I said, move it to your left about two or three inches.
How's that?
There you go.
Okay, good. So you'll see, this, this is the lot in, in question. You'll see in yellowish-green, the folks in the immediate area that have signed in favor of this. You can see that the immediate abutters, both to the side and the rear, have signed it, and across the street, across Hillcrest Avenue, and a number of other people in the area. So they've, they've done a lot of work. Severio, I can, is here to answer any specific questions you may have on the design. And we, we do believe that this will result in a, 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 a great improvement to the neighborhood. I think that the, the design changes that were suggested by the board will improve it even more, and it will allow for a, a new house in that location that will be quite attractive and, and not, it'd actually be less of a, of an impact on the neighborhood because the setbacks have been moved away from the lot lines. So any questions, we're happy to take them.
Okay, for the record, voting members on this would be the same members that voted, that heard it before, would be myself, Victoria, Pam, David, and Jim. Any members of the public who wish to speak for or against this petition? Board members, any comments or questions?
Did we get new packets on this? I'm sorry, I don't see them.
I don't have any.
I had emailed them, oh, I believe, 10 days ago to Leanna, or maybe a week ago. With the package also had the redesign, as well as the, the, the folks that had signed off the petition in favor.
I have, I have the new drawings, Tom. They're in email. They should have been attached to the back of the packets, so. There were just two pages of drawings. This was the front, and then there was this, this, and this.
Oh, it wasn't a different cover, cover page?
I have the, the signatures, but I don't have the new drawings.
I don't have the new drawings either.
I, I copied them today. I, I printed them out from an email today.
Okay.
I was not sure what email it was in, but I do have them. So everybody must have gotten them somewhere.
The email was on May 8th.
Okay.
I know, actually, no, that's the wrong one. That looks like, wouldn't see address?
Address is 90 Bridge Street.
Okay, I know this is right. 90 Bridge Street.
Does anybody have the ability to put them up on the screen?
May 8th?
Oh, I got it.
Yeah, it's May 8th, yeah.
I found it. Oh, am I muted?
You're unmuted.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm working on it now. Thank you. Come on. All right, present now.
Hello, this is, this is, this is Steve Miller. Hi, I'm sorry, I was muted.
Can, so, so what were the, what were the difference between this, these drawings and the previous one?
Severio, you want to take them through that?
Sure, yeah, sure. Hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Well, first of all, thank you all for taking the time tonight. Good to see everyone healthy and safe. We, we took, I guess, your feedback, and, you know, it was fantastic feedback. I think it was super helpful, and I think what we came up with represents something that's a little bit more in line with the neighborhood, more in line with the history of the property and the current architecture. We tried to, as much as we could, represent exactly what we believed your feedback was. So, you know, first and foremost, we brought down the height significantly. It's about three and a half feet within what the existing structure is. We've added some additional decoration, roughly changed the roof line dramatically. I know no one really liked that, that, I guess.
Hang on, two minute, you're all on mute.
Victoria? Can you mute yourself for a minute? We're getting feedback from you. Thank you. All right, you can continue.
Sure. So, as I mentioned, we, you know, we added a little bit more, more detail to the roof lines. We added additional gable ends, integrated some cedar look shingles, just added detail that, that was more in line with the existing architecture. And I think we're, we're pretty happy with the way it came out, and we're pretty confident that it, it does pay a bit more homage to, to what's there now.
Yeah, I would, I would agree that it has a better appearance than what we saw before. Any other comments or questions from board members?
I agree. I think it looks, it has, has something to mention to it, and I, I think it's, it's an improvement on the last design.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm not really seeing too much improvement here. I mean, I'm looking at it, and it's a 35-foot by approximately 35-foot two-story box. There's a little bit going on with the roof, which is okay, but there is no effort otherwise. You know, for me, you look at the elevation that shows the garage doors on it. That's from Hillcrest Ave. That's the side view of Bridge Street to your left. Where those two windows are to the left, you know, that's all porch right now. It's like a one-story porch, and it's open. You're bringing two full stories there, right to the, to the face of the porch, right?
No, because we've actually articulated at the second floor, there's a little bit of a jog there in the middle over the, over the door. And so we've gone from a gable end at the front and the back to five, six. We've added transoms in the front. We've added a different set of trim work to all the windows. We've changed the railing system completely. We've changed all the windows and doors. The garage doors are now more in line with the craftsman style. I mean, this is, this is a dramatic difference compared to the, the drawing that we presented previously.
Hasn't the, 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 the height been reduced from the prior, the design was 35 feet down to 28 feet on this Severio?
Yep, exactly. We were at about 35 feet. Now we're within about three and a half feet of the existing structure.
That corner, that corner is still gonna read, you know, very boxy for how far out it is on the corner. You know, having frontage on two sides like that. I think that's really where the volume comes in. I mean, I appreciate the pulling back at the entryway that you did, but I don't think that's gonna, I don't think that's doing too much to help you break up the volume.
I, I, I mean, I, the, the actual size of the house, the footprint is the same as what's there. Is that correct, Severio?
It is, yeah. We haven't changed the footprint at all.
And the, the garage is, has been moved back, and it's smaller than what had been, what had been there.
That's right, yep. And the, the net calculation, by the way, I do have a stamped letter from our architect that, who calculated all the gross square areas, and the difference is actually 6.7% from existing structure. In total gross square foot and by volume, it's about 20 or so percent. And that's based on ceiling heights changing and all that kind of stuff, too.
So, so just, just to repeat, the, the area of the house in the, in the garage is, is a 6.7% increase over what is there, and volume-wise, it's a 20% increase, and, and the ordinance allows for an increase of up to 50%. And actually, the, the result of this is the, the setbacks are improved quite a bit. The, the existing, the existing garage has a 3.6-foot setback in the rear. The proposed one is, is, let me look here, 19 feet. So it goes from 3.6 feet to 19 feet in the rear. The side yard had been 16, and it's still 16. But it, it, it does allow for a big improvement on the, the rear setback. Other than that, all, the house itself, as I said, has the same footprint, so all the setbacks will be there. Other than that, all uh the house itself, as I said, has the same footprint, so all the setbacks will be the same.
I don't see anything to do with Craftsman style, I guess, except for the doors and the garage maybe. So, you know, I I don't think that it's doing, I don't think it's accomplished. I'm not on the. Am I muted?
No, you're good.
The uh so I don't think that it does reflect the current uh architecture of the of a Craftsman style house, that long that long porch. And I think, you know, I see what Stefano was saying about bumping in the doorway, taking a pocket out of the front of it doesn't really decrease the volume. Because you still have the front face um at the front of that current porch, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, when you count the the existing covered porch, which is one story, you know, as part of the building footprint, that's that's fair. But it doesn't change the fact that you're now infilling it and going up a second story on that footprint area. You know, you know, all of the reduction is from the garage, that's a one-story garage on the back. Um so that doesn't really, I I don't think that really um paints the picture of what's going on with the volume increase.
Well, I I think that the standard is uh on on this is is a proposed change substantially more detrimental than what's there. Uh and I I can understand that that folks might have aesthetic um, you know, uh differences of opinion. But at the end of the day, I I don't think that this will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It'll allow for, you know, a brand-new house. Uh it 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 won't be obviously exactly the same architecture. But it's it's a pretty good-looking place and it will, it'll be a good thing for the neighborhood. And and I think that the neighbors acknowledge that, and that's why uh all of the immediate butters uh are on board for this.
Sorry, can I uh interrupt?
Yes, who's speaking?
Yeah, yeah, so I was, my name is Steven Miller. I'm a the the neighbor across the street. I was muted before when I was, when you were asking for public comment. Uh, I really do appreciate the board's uh look at this. But I, and I did talk with Severio on the phone months ago. But I never did get a copy of the plans or I never did really get a chance to approve this. Just as a note.
Um, hey, Steven, this is Severio. I actually have um two email threads after we spoke where I emailed you twice and asked you for some more feedback. I sent you a complete breakdown of the drawings and attached a PDF and I went through it line by line. And then I followed up again. That was uh early March.
I'll take a look.
Yeah.
I was wanting copies of that email chain as well, but.
Yeah, I emailed you Friday, March thirteenth, after our phone call, and then I emailed you again on Tuesday, March thirty-first, as a follow-up to see if you had any other comments. And uh you didn't um you didn't respond respond either.
Okay, thank you. I'll I'll take a look. Yep, appreciate it.
Any other members?
I have a question. So are we.
Want to be rec- have you recognized as Pam Gugian, member of the board?
Um, yeah. So is i- am I looking at basically it's it's still a flat? Front frontage, except for a little uh uh outcropping from above the door.
Yes, there's a job or the door, the door pushed back behind the area of the door as well. We've also added a roof line that separates the first floor from the second floor. Notice that going across the structure.
Right, but again, like if you're going through like the two top windows, they're at the same plane as that middle shingled section, right? That's not setback. It's.
No, 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 it is not.
And the door itself is not setback either. It's.
The door is setback. The door is setback, yes.
Door is setback.
Yep, yep. The door in that center area between the two windows on the second floor, that's setback as well.
Okay, the uh the siding you're using is um is going to be what?
It's a, the upper half is a cedar look. So it's like a cedar shingle.
It is a cedar shingle or it's look, it looks like a cedar shingle?
It looks like, it looks just like a cedar shingle, exactly.
So what is the material?
It's vinyl.
Vinyl, vinyl and vinyl and vinyl siding, clabbered vinyl, clabbered.
To replace the current aluminum siding that's on the building now.
Does anybody have a copy uh that they can display of the before and after? Previous plan versus this one? Because I think that would help board members see that whatever difference that you've made. Victoria?
It's a very big plan and I'm sorry, I I messed up before. I thought I was muted when I was wrestling with the old plans. But I do have a, I did pull that out and uh it's very large. And um you can see the front elevation. I I'm not gonna be able to put it on the screen because I don't have it electronically, I don't think. But can people see that? Not very well, probably. That's the old front elevation.
We're looking at the existing plans right now. I think, can those be removed?
That's the difference. She's just.
I'm holding up on my screen so people could see what the pre the earlier design that um was reviewed looked like.
Victoria, raise it up a little bit and closer to the screen, to the camera. Now, now go down a little bit. Thank you.
Can you see that?
That does give you somewhat of a perspective before and after.
All good?
Yep, thank you.
Right, and I have the picture of the what the house looks like now, too. Which is a lot different. So again, and and I'm looking at the the uh house as it looks now, the current picture. Um, what's now with this? This design, what's the percentage in volume increase over what it is now and with this new difference?
The the percentage increase in the area is six point seven percent. The percentage increase in volume is twenty point five percent. And the ordinance provides that you can go up to fifty percent.
Only twenty percent difference between what I'm looking at now, which is basically a one-story building almost to this. That just seems.
I I think I think the distinction here is that in most cases, people are coming looking for some kind of relief on setbacks, whereas we're actually improving. We're taking the four-car garage and reducing it down to two. So as Stefano pointed out, a lot of volume is going to come out of the property because of the that change. We're reducing it dramatically and reducing the footprint.
Oh, and when you're including, when you're saying a twenty percent gain, are you including the porch area in the original, in the existing building as being?
No, 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 no. Uh existing porch wouldn't have been included because it's not, it wasn't closed in versus this is closed in. And that includes any changes in ceiling height that we made on the second floor as well. So if the existing ceilings are, let's say, seven or eight feet and these went up to nine, that that would, that volume would be included in there as well.
It just looks more than, it looks like fifty percent more than.
Yeah, no, no, certainly not.
You have to keep in mind that uh one thing uh is you're 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 uh getting rid of a garage that was twenty-two feet by thirty-eight feet. And replacing it with a garage that is twenty-eight feet uh by twenty-two feet, so that 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 significantly smaller.
Yeah, well, you're not including the garage in the volume increase, are you?
Uh, yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Ah, well, then that that kind of adds up. I'm I'm just looking at the house. Because the house right now does not have an existing garage attached.
It has an existing garage on the on the premises. And it's it's non-conforming, significantly non-conforming. It's got a.
I'm just thinking of the the percentage in living area.
Well, that, I mean, that's not what the the ordinance um talks about. It talks about the um the total um area and volume of the existing non-conforming situation.
Yeah, so you're you're looking at the existing house plus the existing garage.
Correct.
Taking that total amount.
Mm-hmm.
And reducing the size of the garage, but significantly increasing the living area.
I mean, I would I wouldn't say significantly. We're gaining relatively about four or five feet in the front. Uh, on the two sides of the door. It's not, it's not a door adding ten or twenty or thirty feet to the front of the building. We're talking about a porch that was maybe four or five feet.
The volume, the volume increase in the house doesn't really bother me at all. And the height in general doesn't bother me. I I think the where the problem is for me, and I would say that this design is proposed, is substantially more detrimental. Um, the issue is that it's very front-heavy with with the height. There's no relief on the height. Um, and I understand that you're saying that these two apartments, you know, there's not a ton of living space. There's not a ton of square footage. And I completely agree with you. Um, but if if you could find a way to to get the same space that you're showing here, or even, you know, potentially slightly more space. But pull it back off the street, if you could break up that sidewall on Hillcrest, the front wall, you know, maybe the second floor front wall on Bridge Street. Something, you know, to pull like uh to make it more of a dormer situation rather than a full, you know, second height with the roof sitting on top of the plate there. You know, if you could kind of like knock that corner, I think you could maybe add height, you know, maybe the heights above the garage. I know you have a nice deck back there, but you know, can you? I know you're working with the existing footprint, but it just so happens that the existing building has that low one-story open porch in the front. And you're capitalizing on that part of the footprint to go up, and it makes sense, but it's it's really harsh from the street, from the two sides. For me, if you could figure out a way to get that same volume, but kind of pull some of it back or break it up and really bring, you know, part of the eve line down or something. Um, that would go a long way, or maybe add it uh some sort of open porch on the front or, you know, wraparound or something to help break it up a little bit. You know, I'm definitely not opposed to the project, but um that corner is really heavy for me right now.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, just to clarify, I um I think I think Tom might have um misidentified me as a designer in the project. But Christine and I bought the home together. She's going to be living in one unit. I'm going to be living in one unit. She works at um Endicott, obviously, uh as Tom mentioned. And so we are obviously looking to maximize the livable area. And the thought process was, as it stands currently, this is a very expensive project to build. And so to make any additional structural considerations that would slide this thing back, as you know, a- as someone in the field, would be a significant expense. Um, so we tried to work within the existing footprint as best we could. You know, adding as much uh interest as we could without, you know, substantially changing the way these setbacks are set up. We didn't want to, I I mean hypothetically, the the uh the rear of the second floor, maybe we could slide it back. But that's a significant change in the way that this thing is framed and set up. And we wanted to try to true to the existing footprint as possible.
Severio, would you be able to get any of the second floor living space above the garage? Like, you know, if you picture sort of one garage bay or part of a bay, could you pull some of that square footage back? Because you've already got the foundation there that everyone knew.
Yeah, if we, if if the board would be amenable to us sliding it back over the garage, I just didn't think, I didn't think that you guys would want to see that. So we were thinking, you know, present as close to what's there as possible. Um, and and we thought hypothetically that that would be what you guys would want to see. But in a perfect world, I'd love to, even if we took that second floor and just slid the plate back, right, just to get that, like you said, to soften it a bit. Yeah, we'd be absolutely open to that.
For me, that would be huge to provide some relief and bring down that corner or break it up a little bit. And you know, you're not losing living space, you know, or building new footprint. Um, that might be, you know, not too much of a burden expense-wise.
Yep, yep, yeah. And the other thing we contemplated doing was um leaving some of that front porch in the front corner, right on the corner of Hillcrest and and um Bridge. The only dilemma was then it led to having two doors on the front door. And I know everyone really liked the idea of having that single-family look, a two-family that looks like it's really a a single-family home. So unfortunately, we didn't want to add another door, but I guess if the board would be amenable to it, we could also play with that a little bit, lose a little bit of square footage. And and have more of that porch look. Um, if you guys felt like that, you know, I I guess it's a, it's a trade-off, right? Lose the, lose that single-family appeal or get that porch. And I'd love to see a porch there because I think that would, that would provide tremendous curb appeal. Um, if if the board felt that would be helpful.
Yeah. I don't know what other people think, but I mean, that sounds great. The second door definitely doesn't bother me. There's two families throughout our side.
I was just uh, I was attempting to share, but I don't know if I could do it, but I was looking at the corner. If you look at the Google Maps picture of the corner, it's it's not that attractive right now. You know what I mean? It's just so there's a lot of asphalt and there's this giant garage and and anyway, so um. I have fewer issues with the bulk on the side there, but um, you know, but if there's ways to, you know, alleviate Stefano's concerns that are not too taxing, I'm on board with that, you know, approach as well.
I think it took a little while for um for us last time we met to see that, that get the idea of what these drawings mean. And I think that what um Stefano was suggesting or in what you're talking about, moving it back over the garage is a is a is a great idea. And you're, this design reminds me of the house right off of one twenty-eight in Danvers, where they put giant dormers over, you know, like it feels like it might still tip over. Um, with the with the weight idea. So I I think pushing it back could help.
Okay.
Would the Severio and and China Alexander, would you folks be in agreement to try to revise and come back again with us with a new plan?
You know, unfortunately, we've lost about six months on this already due to the pandemic. And it's at this point creating a tremendous financial strain on us. Um, you know, ju- just switching to single shingle siding. You know, increase the price of just wrapping this building by about a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. So, and while I know that that's not a big consideration in making some kind of decision, if there was a way that we could perhaps uh make these design changes in the field. You know, I, we would sincerely appreciate it because at this point, to keep pushing us back, you know, every month, we're carrying a mortgage and expenses. We're renting an apartment in the meantime while we're waiting for this home, and and it's just creating a tremendous, tremendous financial strain on us.
Right, well, well, I understand that. I'm not sure that we are typically in line to grant approvals without seeing what we're what we're granting, what we're granting in the in the end as an end result. Would anybody agree with or disagree with that?
No, I think that's it. I think that's absolutely right. We can't agree to something we don't know what it is.
There are occasions when people come back because they have a modification. Now, do they, is that a charge to do that? Or is that some kind of possibility that these people could do? As, you know, these are, these plans are approved, but they come back in three months to see if they could make this modification? How would that play into this?
Somehow I don't see this as a minor modification.
Okay.
I think the main issue last time was that there was a a plane going from the front of the porch straight up. And that is largely still there, except for a hole in the front where the door is.
A- and above the door. And we've added roof lines, changed the gables, decreased the height, changed the siding, changed the doors, changed the garage. So I mean, we we have made significant effort. We have overwhelming support from the neighborhood. And and ultimately, this is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, based on the fact that I think, as one of the board members pointed out, the current home is in significant disrepair. And does not look great at all. You know, as much as we want to make as many changes as possible to try to appease everyone's design taste, I think ultimately, you know, we're proposing something that is not more detrimental, and the neighborhood overwhelmingly saying, please build this.
I think we want, we want to see the project happen, but we want it to be the right project. And I think just changing the volume of the house a little bit won't be two honors compared to what you have today.
And I would argue that this isn't really about design change, it's more about volume and size change. It's, it's, you know, I mean, I've said it's not, it's definitely not Craftsman, but that's not the issue.
But we are ultimately decreasing the volume dramatically. I think we're setting, we're applying a set of standards to just the home, but the application is for the entire project, and we are dramatically improving all of the setbacks and the overall volume of what's there presently on the lot.
Including the garages, though.
Absolutely. I mean, they're part of the, they're part of the home, just like with the last applicant, you guys asked about a shed being on the property, right? I mean, there's no, I don't think there's any distinction. We're presenting a project where we are dramatically improving the setbacks and and improving the overall curb appeal of the property. So to say that what we're presenting is more detrimental, you can't neglect half of the case, you can't neglect half of, you know, what we're proposing. We can't just ignore the fact that there are four garages that are basically falling apart on the property, and the property looks hideous right now. This in no way, what we're proposing is in no way more detrimental than what is there currently, and we can't filter out what we don't want to fill, what we don't want to include.
I'm gonna have a hard time, I mean, you know, that's right where you talked about, where it's, your design is is opinion, I guess, in that regard, so.
And I agree with you, Kevin. I, you know, while I I hear what you guys are saying, I also kind of lean towards what we're saying, you know, because I don't feel like the the area is blighted at all.
No.
And so that is not my thought process, is to say, well, gee, you know, you know, we'll take whatever we can get from this horrible. It's really not that bad.
No.
Long-term standpoint of somebody fixing this up, you've got to change it up a little bit to make it a day off for what your investment's going to be. But I still agree with Stefano in terms of, would like to see a little bit more of something that I'm going to drive by in the future and go, yeah, that looks great.
Let me try to bring this to a head, Attorney Alexander.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we, you know, I have a, you know, a client that is financially strapped here. And while the the design is 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 maybe not perfect from some views, it's, I think, better than, significantly better than than what's there. And it satisfies the the criterion of not being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it would be an improvement to the neighborhood. And and, you know, sometimes the, you know, the old saying, the perfect can be the enemy of the good. So while this is not a perfect design, I think it's a pretty good design, and I think it's, you know, as you can see from the the chart that I presented to you previously, the neighborhood is overwhelmingly in support of it. This is a, this is, you know, this is a derelict property, went for, you know, very short money, it needs a lot, I mean, it needs so much work that it needs to be torn down. And I I think that, you know, the the applicant really went, did quite a bit of redesign here in response to what 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 the input was, the, you know, the, 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 the size of the building was reduced dramatically from 35 feet in height down to 28 feet in height. And there was a lot of details that were added. It's a significantly improved property, and and, you know, we would really, really hope that we could get an approval here tonight and and get moving on this, because it's, it has been delayed significantly.
Based on what you heard, you know what the, what they'll, what the choices are. How do you, do you want to speak to your client and?
Well, I'd like to get, if I could, a sense of the board as to if there's support for going forward with this or or not.
Well, it sounds like you want to vote, then.
No, I don't want to vote, I just want a sense of the board.
Well, the last time, the last time I asked for consensus on a major project, we got burned, and so I'm kind of reluctant to to do that. Got thrown back at us in a in a bad way. The people, we haven't heard from Jim, you're voting, have you got an opinion on this, or good or bad, or whatever? And if you don't want to give it to us, that's fine, I understand.
Oh, I, I, I'm listening to everything, and, you know. Changes, he did make a lot of changes, they, you know, and 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 personal preference or personal purpose, you know? He likes to, he likes something, Kevin likes something, Pam likes something. I think it looks nice. And we've always, we've always paid close attention to what the neighbors and the butters, how they feel about the project. Tom showed us it's overwhelmingly supported. That's like a slam dunk, every, every other, every other case that comes in front of us. Like, and the opposite is when there's, you know, there's 20 people against it. I just, I, with, with all that support, I'm in favor of this.
Okay. Ricky, Victoria?
Yeah, I am, you know, I'm betwixt and between about this, but I do feel like they've been responsive to what the board was asking us for. And I do think if you go and not, I don't want to say that the neighborhood was blighted, I didn't mean that, but if you take, if you drive up that corner and you see all that asphalt there, this this garage extension will look better than what is there right now, just, just, just if you think about purely about that corner. And I know that, you know, I know that it's next to a Craftsman-style house next to it that probably will be torn down at some point, too. But and it's, it is on a, you know, it is on a, you know, a major city entryway, and I know people are sensitive to to what projects look like, big, you know, big changes look like. You know, all things being equal, I would, I would, yeah, thanks, Kevin. I would, if you go to Google Maps, you can actually, they'll let you see the corner, but the, you know, all things being equal, I would, I would vote yes on this tonight, you know, not that it would be my, you know, favorite design ever, but I would, you know, I wouldn't oppose it. But at the same time, I'm, I'm looking at it, and I see, you know, I don't know if there's four votes for it, so, you know, that's, you know, that's up to Attorney Alexander and his client to decide what to do about that. I just noticed that there's a, the board remembers there was a house over, over near Stanley Street that we had went back and forth on, and no one liked the design. And it had vertical siding, I don't know if people remember that house. It looks gorgeous today, even though I think a lot of us are like, hmm, I don't like that, you know, and and it looks pretty good. I mean, but but I do defer, I usually do defer to Stefano's, Stefano's opinion on these kinds of things, because I think he has a good sense of these things. But weighing the equities here, and what the butters want, and the fact that they were responsive, I would, I would vote for it if we were voting tonight.
Okay. Any other last comments? All right, are we ready to close the public hearing?
Uh, no, I, I thought we're not going to get sense of any other members prior to the close of the public hearing.
I'm trying to be careful with that. The only one we haven't heard from is David. You're muted, David.
I'm mute, David.
I'm in agreement with Jim on this.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, who are the voting members, the voting on this one?
There's Victoria, Pam, David, Jim, and myself.
Victoria, Pam, Jim.
David, Jim, and me.
That's just four.
No, you got myself, Victoria, Pam, David.
Oh, David, I'm sorry, yeah. All right, sorry about that.
Do you want me to say more?
Yes, I would, I would like to hear some more.
Uh, yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm, I was really on the fence on this. I mean, I don't feel that, again, you know, I hate, I hate to see this lovely building, which I think it is beautiful, building that's there now, transformed into a box. But I I do kind of agree with Jim as well, that you did at least come back with something that was not a complete box, this not as much of a box as the original design, so.
Okay. I'm okay with closing the public hearing.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a second of the motion.
David, second.
Yeah, I thought you just made the motion to close the public hearing.
I made it, Joel.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Motion to close the public hearing. Victoria?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Motion close public hearing carries, five to zero, and a final motion.
I'll make a motion to grant the special permit at 90 Bridge Street to tear down the existing nonconforming garage and replace it with a smaller garage and make the addition to the existing house based on the plan submitted.
That's based on submitted, the plan submitted tonight?
Tonight.
Yes.
The new plan submitted tonight.
Right, do we have a second of the motion?
Sorry.
David? All those in favor? Victoria?
Yes.
Pam?
My yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes, was that a yes, David?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself. And I will vote yes as well. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate your time and input on this one.
Thank you so much.
Okay, folks. Stefano, I, quite often, I defer to to your thinking, I like the way you think, that's why we have you here. And just the way the circumstances surround something like this.
Lucky, lucky draw on the voting members with Kevin and I on the bench.
Yeah. Okay, we have minutes to to review.
Are we still live?
Yes, we are. Uh, we have to approve the minutes for February 26 by the Pam Gugian approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the February 26 minutes prepared by Pam Gugian.
I'll second it.
Who is that, Jim? Okay, voting members will be myself, Victoria, Pam, David, and and Jim, same as the last hearing. Victoria?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes, five to zero. Those minutes have been approved. Anything else we need to do?
Who's gonna do them this month?
Me.
Kevin will, thank you, Kevin. This was an exciting evening.
Get the fun right out of these meetings, huh?
Is there, I'd like to determine, is Steve still with us?
I am.
Oh, oh, okay. What I find difficult, just in in terms of discussion, and are we still live? We probably are.
We are, yes, we are.
I find it difficult to be able to show plans on the screen before and after and variations. You're only seeing part of the plan because of the interruptions on the screen, and I find this very difficult to appreciate what we're looking at. On top of which, if I didn't have plans in front of me, I couldn't read the details of the screen anyway. And this is one of the reasons that I I have an issue with with trying to do these hearings this way.
I think that's why we tried to keep the hearings to the simple ones. But again, it's your call, if you don't want to meet remotely, period, you can sign that as a board, there's no need to meet, but.
That, that puts a real burden on on applicants, and maybe we have to, we, you know, look at the applicants more carefully, and ones with complicated sets of plans and multiple pages of plans may not be as appropriate to to hear this way.
Yeah, either that, you know, we can get PDF copies of everything, so you can look at it, at them ahead of time, and I think we, that's what happened tonight, that we did have PDF copies, so.
Well, I think that has to be done without question. We should have, we should have a full set of plans before a a meeting like this again.
Okay. I thought we had them.
Well, I didn't have, I didn't have everything.
I just think we could meet, we could meet in a parking lot at the high school Saturday on a Saturday morning, and this would take a lot less time.
Well, I I propose that we use the, use the school auditorium, we could, where we could social distance ourselves by whatever you need to, even with the public, but but I'm told that that's not possible because of situations with having to disinfect afterwards and and cleaning and whatever, so I'm not sure that's the answer, although that's what I'd like to see.
Well, by next hearing, things might have changed, too, things would start to open up and.
Do you have, does anybody have a census to when City Hall is going to be open again?
The mayor.
Open until, I mean, it's still TBD, but I assume it's going to be sometime in June for Beverly, if there are going to be anything similar to us.
The mayor announced that it wouldn't be any sooner than June 1st.
Yes.
Well, we're at the end of June, we're going to be toward the end of, end of June, so maybe we'll be back in town in the building by then.
Joel, there's still be limits on the number of people that can gather in one place, which will limit what we can do. Probably, you know, it may be by the end of June, if we schedule a meeting for very late in June, we might stand the best chance of of, you know, getting in there. Otherwise, there's always Lynch Park.
Like they're doing with doctor's visits, that only the people who are involved with that application would be in, the rest would have to wait in their cars if the weather's bad or.
Yes, we could, we could, they could wait in the hallway, in the hallways downstairs or any of the floors of the building, and only those involved in the petition could be in the room. So, and and if we have to, we can, we can distance ourselves along in in the board. If we have everybody, if we have the five voting members, then we don't necessarily need alternates, but, I mean, there are ways to.
Have the alternates, have the alternates wait outside, all the, only the voting people and Leanna and Steve be in the chamber, and the rest wait out.
The only thing I, the only objection I have to that is, is assuming that, for instance, assuming that Stefano is not, is an alternate for that hearing, I value his opinion on these, some of these plans and subjects, and his is good.
I think, I think, I think.
I think, I think, I think, Joel, that even if we go back to live meetings, there may be a Zoom element to the meetings, um, to allow for people to call in, or to, um, to, to chime in without being physically present, I think that it's probably gonna be a combo, even when we do start backup, if I had to guess.
I agree.
I don't think you can have people peek in the hallway outside of the chambers, I don't think they'd be able to social distance that well.
Wait outside the building in their car, or, you know, and a nice day on the park benches.
I mean, we'd have to everybody supply us with cell phone numbers, and, and we'd be called in when their timing was up. All right, well, that, that won't get resolved tonight, but just, uh, we'll wait to hear, I suppose. Uh, any last comments before we adjourn? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn by Peggy, second, and by Victoria, all those in favor, just raise your hand.
I like that.
Motion is, meeting is adjourned, folks, thank you.
Thanks, Joel, good luck.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
Thanks, Leanna and Steve.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good luck, Steve.